We will call the board our regular scheduled meeting. Well, please stand. Roll call points.
Mr. Atway President.
Here.
Mr. DeCapola Vice President. Dr. Alquist. Mr. Campbell.
We will start with our superintendent's update.
All right, thank you.
The floor is yours.
Board, if you want to make your way down, I'd appreciate that. So we're going to start this evening off with a special presentation. Former board member and current Canfield Rotary President, Mr. Wilkerson, is going to come up for a special presentation.
Sure, come on. Hi, my name's Dave Wilkerson. I am, as Joe mentioned, a former board member, but I come here representing Canfield Rotary. I am the president this year of Canfield Rotary. And given Ms. Prince's impending retirement, we thought we would be remiss if we didn't recognize her for the number of years that she has given the community, which has largely, I think, gone unnoticed and unrecognized. So I want to read a resolution from the Rotary Club and also give her something. Whereas Patricia Prince has dedicated 39 years of exceptional service as treasurer of the Canfield Local Schools, demonstrating unwavering commitment, professionalism, and integrity in managing the financial operations of the district, whereas her diligence, stewardship, and adherence to the highest standards have greatly contributed to the stability and success of Canfield Local Schools, ensuring the district's fiscal health and supporting its mission to provide quality education to all students. Whereas Patricia Prince has earned the respect and admiration of colleagues, educators, administrators, and community members for her remarkable contributions and her steadfast dedication to the betterment of Canfield, whereas Patricia Prince is retiring this year, marking the conclusion of a distinguished career that has been instrumental in shaping the educational landscape of our community. Therefore, be it resolved that the Rotary Club of Canfield extends its sincere gratitude and heartfelt commendation to Patricia Prince for her outstanding service and dedication to Canfield Local Schools and the community at large. Be it further resolved that the Rotary Club of Canfield is proud to recognize Patricia Prince with the distinguished Paul Harris Fellow Award, a tribute to her exemplary service and embodiment of the values and principles of Rotary. The Paul Harris Fellow Award is one of the most prestigious recognitions conferred by Rotary International. Named after Paul Harris, the founder of Rotary, this honor is awarded to individuals who have made a significant contribution to Rotary's mission of advancing peace, goodwill, and community service. Recipients of the Paul Harris Fellow Award are recognized for their commitment to the ideals of Rotary, whether through financial contributions to the Rotary Foundation or through outstanding service to their communities. This award symbolizes the highest standard of humanitarian excellence and is a testament to the recipient's dedication to making a positive impact in the world. Patricia Prince's years of service and dedication to Canfield Local Schools exemplify the values upheld by Rotary, making her a most deserving recipient of this distinguished honor. So with that... We have this. She's got a coat. And we've got this. The Paul Harris Fellow. You've got a pin. Your pin. So you've got a pin that you can wear proudly. Get it open. And then that's a pin.
Can I get a hug? Thank you so much. Wow.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We're going to take Mike.
Just, I just want to say thanks. This was a surprise. I had no idea. And what a wonderful honor. Thank you so much, Rotary.
All right. Good job Rotary. We kept it a secret. All right, that was awesome. And it's hard to keep a secret from her. Okay. Coach Simone, I want you to come forward, please, up here in the front. And soccer players, I want you to join coach up here. All right, guys, gals, come on up. So we have a special proclamation that Mr. DeCapola is going to read, but as everybody's coming up, I'm going to tell you this right now. This might never, ever again happen in Canfield history. We have a coach that has 450 career wins. All right, might never see this again. All right, yeah, come on up there, spread out a little bit. All right. So Mr. DeCapola, whenever you're ready, when the troops are good up there, go ahead.
... Whereas, it is the intention of the Canfield Local School District Board of Education and Administration to focus attention on noteworthy occasions and individuals. And whereas, this evening, the superintendent and board wish to recognize and congratulate Coach Phil Simone on achieving his 450th career win. And whereas, Coach Simone has demonstrated unwavering dedication to the soccer program at Canfield High School and has made a tremendous and lasting impact on the lives of many young athletes by instilling in them the values of teamwork, discipline, and positive attitude, both on and off the field. And whereas, on behalf of the entire Canfield Local School District, we extend our gratitude to Coach Simone and acknowledge the significant effort required to build, grow, and sustain a successful team. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of Superintendent Joe Knoll and the Canfield Board of Education, we proudly honor and recognize Coach Phil Simone for his outstanding achievement of 400 career victories and for his continued commitment to his players and the Canfield Soccer Program. Congratulations, Coach Simone.
I told him no pressure to get to 500. Piece of cake. Well, look at this guy right here. I want to make sure y'all know that the board at a special meeting hired our new treasurer, Mr. Ben Marco, who's actually in the house with us today up front. So we want to welcome Ben to Canfield Schools as our new treasurer. He'll be coming officially come January and transition a little bit with Ms. Prince before her departure. So one of my favorite days of the year is Veterans Day, and we had an amazing three or four days of different activities throughout the district. Every school did something to honor our veterans, and I'm very proud of what we did, what we accomplished. So I'm just going to show you real quick, a little bit about what this looked like. Our kids and staff members did a great job. To any veterans here, any audience, or our veterans at home, I always like to end it with this. "From the son of a Navy WWII veteran, I thank you for your service."
Okay, thank you, Mr. Atway.
Thank you, Mr. Knoll. Appreciate it. And thank you to the Rotary and Patty. I think we're going to be recognizing you, I feel like, every meeting until, so you deserve it. Every meeting, we'll make sure we make that recognition. And to Coach Simone, I know they've left, they've got, it's a school night, but congrats to Coach Simone on the 450 wins. Both teams did an outstanding job, from the girls and boys. The boys won districts, the girls made it two districts, and then it was a great season overall, so it was exciting to watch them do what they did. So congrats to both the boys and the girls. All right, next up, we will go with our superintendent's update. And then, Mr. Marco, I don't want to leave you out of it, so we look forward to the transition, and I know that Ms. Prince will make sure she helps in that transition. So we will start with the high school. One sec.
Dr. Potts.
Thank you, Mr. Atway. Tough act to follow after the Veterans Day video, but we'll do our best. Mark Potts, principal at Canfield High School. I'm proud to announce that Canfield High School Rotary Club Student of the Month is Michael Pantalakis. A few years ago, when I got here, I just knew him as Gabby's little brother, but he has established himself and built an impressive high school resume with hard work, discipline, and just this remarkable kindness that everyone seems to mention when they ask about him. So Michael's a senior. He's an outstanding student with a 4.0 GPA, and he hasn't taken any shortcuts to get there. He has taken 10 AP and CCP courses so far. Michael's shown leadership as both a junior class officer and a senior class officer, and he's currently, I'll write these down, currently Vice President of Young Teens. He's president of the Chemistry Club. He's treasurer of the Teen Health and Medicine Society, and he's also a National Honor Society. Did I leave anything out, Mike?
No.
Okay, all right, okay. Probably some other stuff, too. Athletically, Michael plays tennis, and in his three years so far, he still has another season to go. He's earned first-team All-Conference once and second-team All-Conference twice. He's also been the recipient of Larry Davis Best Sportsmanship Award. He's done a load of volunteer work. I won't even list all that, but some of the things that really stand out to me about Michael is that he started his own business while he's in high school. He has Mike's Car Detailing. Give you a little advertisement there. He was a state finalist in the Samsung Solve For Tomorrow competition, looking at the chemistry and the biology of the invasive spotted lanternfly to create a reliable commercial trap. He has competed in the Ohio STEM competition, and he's working on developing a sports wrap that can be worn during play that will hold or secrete medication to relieve the athlete of pain. So Michael will be attending Youngstown State University next year, majoring in industrial systems engineering, with plans for law school following that. I know whatever he does, he's going to be great at it. So congratulations to Michael Pantalakis, our Canfield High School Rotary Club Student of the Month.
Congratulations, Mikey, and to the Pantalakis family. Mike, I think you've got to work on padding your resume. You didn't do that much in high school. Come on. Great work, and best of luck in your transition in college. Mr. Rubin.
Good evening. Congratulations to Mikey. He was an outstanding student in our middle school as well. My name is Judd Rubin. I'm the principal at Canfield Village Middle School, and I'm proud to present Addie Dill Lazar, Rotary Student of the Month. Come on down. Addie has joined here with his parents, Mr. and Mrs. Dill are in there, and then also her grandparents, Mr. and Mrs. Dill, so welcome. Addie has been a positive impact to Canfield Middle School since fifth grade year. She comes to school happy every day and truly loves being around people, both adults and her peers. One of her teachers, Mr. Huth, has this to say. "I have been teaching for 33 years, and I put Addie in my 1% of special students. Her positive energy, both as a student and athlete, is infectious on whatever she's involved with. Addie has been an office helper since fifth grade and can practically run our entire office. She's also a multi-sport athlete. She plays volleyball and basketball and is looked up to by her teammates and coaches. She has also taken two high school-level classes, algebra and physical science, on top of her athletic commitments. No one would be surprised if Addie is back here during her senior year to be recognized again." When I asked her about her favorite subjects in school, she said math. She likes the challenges that comes with it. She lives with mom and dad. She has two sisters who are also great athletes here at Canfield. No pets, although she wants me to put a plug in for a dog, mom and dad, so see what she can do. When she gets older, she'd like to be a veterinarian and would like to take another family trip to Aruba. In her spare time, she likes hanging out with friends, playing basketball and volleyball, and spending time with family. So Addie Dill is our Rotary Student of the Month.
Congratulations to Addie and to the Dill family. Thank you. Great work. Mr. Lavery.
Good evening. My name is Travis Lavery. I'm the principal at CH Campbell Elementary School in Canfield, and I am pleased to be joined today by Teddy Ward, our Rotary Student of the Month. Now, Teddy moved to CH Campbell in the Canfield area back in second grade, and he had an immediate impact on all the other students in the school. Everybody knew him immediately. The kid has more charisma than you could shake a hockey stick at. I mean, this is a kid that is just well-known and loved by absolutely everybody that gets a chance to meet him. His teacher had some amazing things to write about him. She said Teddy is on the ball. He is always following directions, working hard, paying attention, and always does it with a smile on his face, as you can see. He's kind, he's respectful. He is everything that you would want in a Rotary Student of the Month, especially a student in our schools. We are eternally, you know, just blessed to have him as a part of our district. When he was asked what his favorite subject was, he said it is mathematics, and he lives at home with his mom, his dad, his brother and sister. They love playing board games and watching sports. He plays a bunch of different sports. He plays hockey, he plays baseball, he plays football, and no surprise with the lineage, but he's hoping to be a hockey player when he gets older. So with all of that said, please give a round of applause for Teddy Ward, our Rotary Student of the Month. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Teddy, and to the Ward family. Teddy, that smile does look very infectious, so kudos to you, man. Mr. Flood.
Good evening. Mike Flood, principal of Hilton. Come on over here. I have pleased to introduce Rotary Student of the Month, Zane Snyder. Zane's a wonderful kid. Zane's a leader in all areas of the classroom. He's kind, helpful, and to both classmates and staff. He sets goals, shows determination and leadership at Hilton, and we're truly blessed to have him here. His favorite subject is math. Lives with mom, dad, and two brothers. I'm going to help you out here. He wants a pet dog, so maybe for Christmas, right around the corner there. One of his favorite traditions, attending at least one Duke football game a year where dad played there. You know, so that's a proud moment there. Zane hopes to play sports in college. He works hard. If he works hard enough, he likes to play professional. Zane loves to visit Duke University and wants, one day, to visit, meet Josh Allen, one of his players there. So he loves to play many sports. He's currently playing basketball at Canfield. Favorite sport is baseball and football. And one thing I didn't know about him is he took gymnastics in the past and loves doing flips for just fun. If you stop by Inner Circle, his picture's now in there, the poster, so we're proud to have him as Rotary Student of the Month at Hilton.
Congratulations, Zane, and to the Snyder family. Excellent. Before I let you guys go, because I know it's a school night, we're going to do some student resolutions, since it's been a big recognition day. We'll let Mrs. DeCapola do these resolutions, and then I'll tell you, this will be a good time for you guys to head out, knowing that it is a school evening.
Okay, these are resolutions 48-2026 through 53-2026. Girls tennis. Whereas Hadley Moser was named first-team All-AAC and sectional singles champion in girls tennis. And whereas Marina Epp was named first-team All-AAC and earned fourth place in sectional doubles in girls tennis. And whereas Cece Naluri was named first-team All-AAC and earned third place in sectional singles in girls tennis. And whereas Simran Sethi was named first-team All-AAC and earned fourth place in sectional doubles in girls tennis. And whereas Laney Modarelli was named second-team All-AAC in girls tennis. And whereas the Canfield... And whereas, the Canfield High School girls tennis team earned the title AAC Champions, and whereas, the girls tennis team has displayed good sportsmanship in addition to outstanding athletic ability throughout the 2025-2026 season. And whereas, these accomplishments have brought honor to the students themselves, their families, and their school. Therefore, be it resolved that these students be formally commended for their outstanding achievements, and that this resolution be entered into the official minutes of the Canfield Board of Education. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be presented to each student as a lasting recognition of their excellence. Congratulations, girls, what a phenomenal season.
Thank you, Mrs. DiCapua, and congratulations to the girls tennis team. So at this point in our program, this is a great exit strategy for all of you, if you would like to leave. We appreciate you guys being here for the recognitions. Congratulations to all of our Rotary students, to our tennis team, our soccer team, and everybody that got recognized today, appreciate your being here. For those of you that want to stay, you're more than welcome for the remainder of the program as well. All right, next up, we have the presentation of the minutes. We did have our October 8 regular meeting and our 27th and 31st special meeting, we did receive these minutes in advance. Can I have a motion for approval?
So move Campbell.
Second, DiCapua.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Oquist?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. DiCapua?
Yes.
Mr. DiCapua?
Yes.
Mr. Atway?
Yes. Next up, we will go with our treasures reports for September.
The first report, the cash summary report, this month, September, we received our settlement and including our rollback in Homestead, so the general fund balance is pretty healthy at the current moment at 17 and a half million. Food Service Fund is also, has a healthy balance at 1.2 million. And then, the Administration of Athletics on page two, 300 Fund, it has improved as well due to the gate receipts that have come in in the month of September. The check payment register, just a couple I wanted to comment on, which you've seen some of these in the purchase order register ahead of time. Highland Administration, about six items down from the top, 153,985. This is for our property fleet and liability insurance for the year, and we have switched, it's now with the Ohio School Plan, we're no longer with Utepa. About halfway down the first page, Fairway Ford for $61,000. This is a new transport box truck that we're using in the cafeteria, has a lift gate on it to transport the food to the elementary schools. And then, a couple below that, Huntington National Bank for $54,958. This was our first lease payment on the scoreboard, and that was totally funded by a boosters donation. And then, one more item, on the second page, about 10 items down, Myers for $76,924. This was a new Ford Transit van that we're using to transport special services students to and from school. And then, purchase order register, the new items you haven't seen start on page 15, and one item I wanted to point out on, or two items on page 23 at the bottom, radio sound, these for $85,000 and $99,000, these were approved by the board at the special meeting on September 30 to replace the fire alarm systems at the elementary schools. And the investment holdings, the rate at the Fomers National Sweep account had stayed the same for September at 4.55%, although the Fed has made two cuts, one in September, one in October, so the rates are starting to go down, but this month we made over $90,000 in interest earnings. Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, we need a motion to approve those, please.
So move, DiCapua?
Second, Oquist.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Prince? All right. Roll call, please.
Dr. Oquist?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. DiCapua?
Yes.
Mr. DiCapua?
Yes.
Mr. Atway?
Yes. Public participation, I see we have one name that I don't recognize, Jason Henry. You know the drill, Mr. Henry, it's good to see you. Do I, do you want me to start my timer for you?
Go ahead.
All right. Three minutes it shall be, state your name and address for the record, please.
Jason Henry, 30 Montgomery Court. Just a couple quick things, I'd like to ask the board for continued diligence on looking at what we can do to improve the facilities here in the school district. I would encourage the board to not use the changeover coming up at the end of the year as an excuse to put it off a couple months after that and say, "Well, we had new people, and we had to, you know, redo everything." I would encourage getting things together for a smooth transition, as we've talked about in the past, with the, if there's a desire to improve the facilities, to replace, to build new, it takes a long time to make that happen. If you want to put it on the May ballot, it has to happen almost immediately, but even if you're looking at November, it needs to start well in advance. This past election cycle, watching the scroll across the board, there were some schools that did have some success with school levies, there were some that did not, but I was encouraged that there is some success to be had out there. Also, on an unrelated note, I know hopefully back next month, so I want to thank all the board members that are going off. It's a thankless job, you hear that a lot, but I'd like to say thank you for your service, and your service to the community is noted, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Thank you.
I appreciate your commentary, as always, and I think as difficult as it can be, I'll stay as, every time you've spoken, we know that facilities are a priority, we have a strong desire to focus on facilities, however, from a full transparency perspective, we do know that there is going to be a changeover of the board with two new members and myself coming back on, so in making decisions prior to that, the last thing you want to do is have a polarizing decision with a new board makeup, because in my opinion, if you have, not everybody's on the same ship, that ship is going to sink, because if somebody tries to tell you that what you did wasn't the right thing, and we haven't been able to include them in that conversation, and there's no alignment going forward, that would be problematic, and I think we've seen it happen in our first couple tries at trying to do new facilities, and when you have an adversarial thought process, it doesn't work well. So we're going to try to still focus on that, but our decisions probably won't be made until January, when we have the new board in place, and that just at least...
Transition.
Yeah, no, for sure, transition, for sure, so, but I, you know, if anybody else wants to comment on that, you're more than welcome to, but I mean, it's still a focus, and I forgot to turn off your, you see your three minutes? You did that pretty good.
You're up.
Come up. So, but I appreciate it.
No, and just that you brought up the new board members, as Mr. Henry did, too. I see Joe here, and Katie, congratulations to both of you, and Nader, you as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, where are we at next? It's up to you. Yes, Mr. Knoll, we are going to personnel.
So we'll start with some resignations of licensed staff. We have Michelle Head, Middle School 5th Grade Science and Social Studies Teacher, effective June 1 of '26, requesting retire, rehire. We have Mr. Bob Tinkie, Middle School Physette Teacher, effective June 1 of '26, requesting retire, rehire as well. And Heidi Garwick, Middle School Art Teacher, effective June 1, 2026, for the purpose of retirement. I'd like to recommend approving unpaid parental leave for Kristin Nesbit, Middle School Math Teacher, following six weeks of paid leave, beginning November 18 through December 3. Some resignations of classified staff, we have Colleen Anderson, Middle School Custodian, effective February 1 of '26, for the purpose of retirement. Breann Black, CH Campbell Special Needs Aid, effective October 24 of 2025. Matt Bratcher, CH Campbell Head Custodian, effective October 31 of 2025. Ed Orsina, Middle School Lunch Room Aid, we're going to amend the effective date from October 31 of '25 to October 17 of 2025. April Hager, Central Office Accounts Payable, effective December 1 of 2025. And Ron Leone, Bus Driver, effective November 12 of 2025, those are all Exhibit Number 3. We have some hiring of classified staff, Tariya Shayat, Middle School Lunch Room Aid, at 2 and 1/2 hours a day at 1673 an hour, effective October 20 of 2025. McKenna Lither, God bless you, Special Needs Aid at CH Campbell, 5 and 1/2 hours at 1673 an hour, effective November 13 of 2025. And Sergio Corano, CHS Custodian, at 1790 per hour, bless you again, eight hours per day, pending background checks, those were Exhibit 4. And I'd recommend approving our classified substitutes with all their pending background checks in Exhibit Number 5, we have Brittany Strowinski, Emily Nabotny, Breann Black, Tamara Doppel, Jenna Fagerd, we have Melissa Savanich, we have Pam Cavelli, and Victoria Calder. I also like to recommend the hiring of our extracurriculars as attached in Resolution Number 54-2026, that was Exhibit Number 6. And I found we have some transfers and reassignments, we have Corey Rock from the High School Custodian to CH Campbell Head Custodian, effective November 3 of 2025, and Jeff Stewart from our High School Night Custodian to the High School Afternoon Custodian, that'd be effective November 3 of 2025, all those as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Knoll. Based on the recommendation, the superintendent have a motion to approve the personnel resignations, hirings, and reassignments as outlined in Items A through G, please.
So move, DiCapua?
Second, Campbell.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Oquist?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. DiCapua?
Yes.
Mr. DiCapua?
Yes.
Mr. Atway?
Yes.
And I'd like to recommend adopting our policies for our second reading, all those that were listed in Exhibit Number 7.
Based on the recommendation, the superintendent have a motion to adopt our policies for, as presented in Exhibit 7, for the second reading.
So move, Campbell.
Second, DiCapua?
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Oquist?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. DiCapua?
Yes.
Mr. DiCapua?
Yes.
Mr. Atway?
Yes.
And I'd like to recommend approving our out-of-state overnight field trips. We have the High School Special Needs Classes, traveling to Hermis PA to visit Cranks and have lunch on December 5 of 2025. The High School AP Classes, traveling to David H. Lawrence Convention Center in Pittsburgh, PA to attend the National College Fair on January 28 of 2026. High School Varsity Softball Team, traveling to North Myrtle Beach, April 5 through the 10 of 2026, participate in a softball tournament, providing an outside source, pays travel and lodging expenses. And our Boys and Girls Bowling Teams, traveling to Hermis, PA on December 29 of 2025, participate in a bowling tournament, all those in Exhibit Number 8.
Based on the recommendation, superintendent have a motion to approve our out-of-state overnight field trips as presented.
So move, Oquist?
Second, DiCapua.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Oquist?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. DiCapua?
Yes.
Mr. DiCapua?
Yes.
Mr. Atway?
Yes. Next, we have donations. DiCapua, you want to read those?
Okay. For November 2025, donations, the following have been donated to the Speech and Debate Team Club. Michelle Navarro, $100. Rudra Appal, $100. Donald Belosek, $250. Wilson Lane Farm, $100. Sisters Cupboard and Closet LLC, $250. James and Jennifer Hollis, $250. Merrill A. Bank of America Company, $500. Animal Medical Care Center, $250. The following have been donated to the Interact Club Pickleball Tournament. Caravet Missouri LLC, $1,100.
No, I think that's Sherman Creative.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sherman Creative Promotions, $1,100. Caravet Missouri LLC, $250. Canfield Rotary Association, $500. Canfield PTA at CH Campbell has donated $799 for a staff refrigerator. The following have been donations to the Canfield Players. Okay, here we go. Edward and Vicky Fredericks, $100. Cock Eye Creamery of Canfield, $50. Families for Adrian Viviano, $500. Sean and Elizabeth Sitch, $50. Sally Pagano and Shannon Lynn Newhouse, $50. Kyle and Shannon Lynn Newhouse, $50. Tanner and Courtney Larson, $250. David and Sarah Kovas, $300. John and Kathleen Vogren, $50. Joseph and Anna Rosetti, $50. Michael and Allison Zakali, $500. Youngstown Mirror and Glass Company, $100. Basso Del Sol LLC, $1,000. Melissa Mulane Paget, DDS, $100 to the Senior Class Craft Show. Ohio Pile Prints, $6.06 to the CHS Principals Fund. Sharon and Joe Batura, Exploration Table for CH Campbell. In a total of cash donations for November of $7,605.06, which is phenomenal. Thank you all very much.
Yes, thank you for those that donated, can I have a motion to accept the donations as presented?
So move, DiCapua.
Second, Oquist.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Oquist?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. DiCapua?
Yes.
Mr. DiCapua?
Yes.
Mr. Atway?
Yes. Based on the agenda, I don't think, oh, you know what, any old business.
No old business.
There is no old business at this time, but I guess, I know we'll do it again next month, but my only old business is, it's going to be tough to say bye to two people that I've worked with for some time, so next month we'll take that on, so, but, very good. With that, can I, I think we have a motion for adjournment.
So move, Campbell.
Second, DiCapua?
All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, have a great night, everyone.